The old saying goes, hard times create hard men. Hard men create soft times, soft times create soft men. We're there.
I had one on my desk. I had one on my desk in the office. My head's good, two sheets.
I did come up four hundred. Just you have to stop it after a half a page.
Yeah, good work. Need to eliminate some of these committees.
Hi Bob. You can go front and back. That's a good idea.
I'll put this on the front. Put this on the front.
There's a number that has to be.
It's like a country.
Yes. Okay. So, we are live and we have somebody joining us remotely. So, we'll begin the meeting and we'll call it order and we'll begin with opening prayer.
Father God, we come to you tonight grateful hearts for all that you do in our lives and around this community. Lord, we pray your blessings upon our community and our town. We pray your blessings upon this meeting tonight and the people that helped to lead us and those that take that support. We thank you for all that goes on around here and all the blessings that we already have. We look forward to the future you have for us. We pray all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Jerry.
Okay, sure. Jim Klein. Mike Hennig.
Here.
David Keel. Gary Cole.
Here.
Jim King.
Virtually there. Very good. And does everybody have a chance to review the minutes from last month?
There's two sets. September eighth and September twenty ninth.
Start with September eighth.
I make a motion, we accept September eighth.
Have a motion and second to accept the minutes from September eighth, meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
That was passed and then on what's the September twenty ninth?
I'll make that motion also.
I'll second it also.
Have a motion and a second to accept the minutes from September twenty ninth, meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's passed and does everybody have a chance to look at the claims?
I make a motion, we accept the claims.
Okay, let's keep it. I'll second it, dude.
Have a motion and a second to accept the claims for the month, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed and the financials are in front of you as well.
Yeah. Make a motion to accept the claim.
Keep it the same second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the financials for the month, all in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? And that's passed. Very good. We'll move on to the public hearing, which is for the 2026 budget.
Everybody has Form One and Form Three in front of them.
Form One, you know, is a breakdown of the budgetary expenditures for each one of the funds. And Form Three is the summary of the different funds on how much the budget estimates and those four funds that have tax-related funds coming into that compared to the current tax rate. And if you wish, Mr. President, I can hit some of the highlights of this, if that would be helpful.
Probably would be.
Okay. One thing, it is, it was a tough year putting the budget together because of the owing various things. The tax cap, which as you know, is the amount that actually is sent back to the state that we can't collect because there is a cap of what can be assessed for each property owner's taxes. Last year's was $290,000. This year it jumps up to $375,700. What that means is, for example, you'll see that it appears that on our general fund, we were going to collect taxes of $849,400 from our residents. Well, in effect, that has to be reduced by the tax cap. So, in reality, we will only get tax money of $559,451. So, that's, it's funny money. You never really get that. So, we had to deal with that. Other funds from the state have also decreased. Unfortunately, as we've talked before, the edit tax is still coming in for an additional year. So, we, we still have that, therefore you'll see expenditures under edit are still coming in. We also had less cash on hand this year, $100,000 less cash on hand than we had this year versus last year. But having said that, we were still able to stay under the maximum tax levy that is allowable. Although in past years, we've tried to save our taxpayers upwards to a few thousand dollars. This year, we just made it into the tax levy max by $671. Overall, the budget, as far as our budgetary expenditures, only went up $18,000. And in reality, if you take out the other opio funds that were added as a budgetary expense this year, we really only increased our budget $944 this year. And that's still giving raises a three percent across the board to all of your employees. So, I think we have done the best that we can with all of the circumstances. One thing that changed slightly from the time you guys had a workshop on the budget, I moved $30,000 from professional, no, $25,000 of the $30,000 that you had budgeted under edit for professional services, since you're not doing now that new zoning ordinance, moved it over to capital expenditures because I think the desire was to be able to buy another truck with that edit money for next year. So, I moved that category from professional services to capital expenditures under edit. So, other than that, I think hoping any questions that the public might have. Otherwise, I think you, we have to wait 10 days and can then have a meeting to approve the budget. Can't do that tonight. So, I think there's a special meeting scheduled on the 23rd for that purpose of so they approve the budget because it has to be in by the end of the month. Sherry, anything you want to add that we didn't get on?
No, that's good. Thank you.
I have one question.
Okay.
Go ahead. Okay, thanks. Bob, if we have a request tonight for funding, which we might have on the agenda, and we make a decision to do that, how does that get laid into the budget as it is already prepared?
Well, if it's an expenditure that you have funds available for this year, I suggest you just go ahead and at least encumber it this year out of the funds for this year so it doesn't alter what the budget is set for for next year. If it's something that you want to add to next year's expenditures, we can amend this before you're voting on this on the 23rd.
Okay, no, I, I would think if we could encumber the dollars, that would be great. And we, and it's a discussion to have on the agenda, so, okay. Good question. Obviously, it was a difficult year based on some things of, you know, with difficulties with some cut money and so on and so forth. But I think it did turn out pretty well. Are there any questions from citizens today? None. So, we will close the public meeting at this point and then someday we'll come through. Thank you. Moving on, we go to our guests. We have the American Legion.
I have a check for $6,000 for the police department. It is due assist with the block.
Okay. That's awesome. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. Appreciate it.
Yes.
And if nobody heard, and for the benefit of our viewing groups, we'll repeat the $6,000 contribution from the American Legion for the police department. We appreciate that very much. I know they do. Thank you. Oh, we need a motion to accept this case.
I'll make a motion, we accept $6,000 from the American Legion for the police department.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second to accept the $6,000 donation from the American Legion for the police department. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That is passed. Thank you again. And we also have Valerie Schaefer here from the Wayne County EDC.
Good evening.
Hello.
Thank you all for having me. I'm here to talk with you today about the EDC's efforts to establish a land bank countywide. I have here with me Jeb Reese from Intend, Indiana. We are utilizing their renewed land bank program to help us get established. But as you know, the EDC, we have been focused on housing development for the last several years. A lot of that focus has been in multifamily, new housing subdivisions, even helping to finish unfinished subdivisions through our Housing Accelerator Program, of which Mears Estates has received some funding to extend infrastructure to ensure that the builder can have viable home lots there. But as we look at the future of housing development, we really realize that the most cost-effective and responsible way to creating housing is through the revitalization of our existing neighborhoods. All throughout Wayne County, I'm sure you've seen and experienced vacant and abandoned deteriorating structures. I know you've been a participant in the Wayne County Blight Program, of which we are tearing down anywhere from 40 to 44 homes across Wayne County because they've become in such an undevelopable, unrevitalized state. And so, we have to tear them down. Establishing a land bank will keep, help keep our properties from getting to that point where they have to be demolished. A land bank can help us gain control of the property and then find suitable individuals or developers that can come into the community and revitalize those homes through contractual obligation with the land bank. That state, it'll be a negotiation in terms of how an individual would actually revitalize those homes. But they would be accountable to what they say they're going to do. And if they don't do it, the land bank can take that property back. So, it's really a process for us to look at the properties that don't sell in the commissioner's sales, which we know there's typically around 30 of those properties every year that don't get purchased and they just sit and they further deteriorate and they further negatively impact our neighborhoods by inviting crime, drug use, pests and rodents settle into these homes and then that causes issues for neighbors as well. These deteriorating homes also are decreasing property values for their neighbors. So, it becomes a real issue within our communities. So, we have partnered with Intend, Indiana, to look at how we establish a land bank here so we can take control of our future essentially. And the land bank will support us in identifying those homes at commissioner's sale. That would be a benefit to the communities that are participating. And then get ahold of those properties, clear the title, maintain the properties until a suitable new owner is found and agrees to revitalize them. So, that's kind of like the baseline of what a land bank is hoping to accomplish. And we've been working to figure out who our partners will be in this process. We're working with the Wayne County Government to be a financial contributor as well as cooperative when it comes to transferring unsold properties to the land bank. We're working with the city of Richmond. As you know, just by volume, the nature of the size of the city, they have a lot of properties that would qualify for the land bank. And then we're also reaching out because the EDC's work is countywide. We really want to support our smaller towns too through your redevelopment efforts. And so, we would really love for Cambridge City to continue or to consider being a partner in this. But as you've demonstrated with your budget, I understand there are financial constraints along with that. So, while we're asking for a financial contribution from participating units of government, we also have a request before the Wayne County Commissioners and Council for us to provide $100,000 of seed funding from the Consolidated Edit Fund, of which you are a participant. But it's because we have those pooled resources that we can make a financial contribution to this program. But we would still like some financial buy-in from participating units of government because that would ensure your engagement in the program and it would also ensure you would have a board seat on the Land Bank Board of Directors that will be established in the coming months. Jeb, I'm going to call on you and see if I missed anything important when it comes to the viability of the land bank?
Nope. Did a great job.
Okay.
Any questions from up here?
So, what we've asked the smaller communities is to consider a contribution of $5,000 per year and make a three-year commitment to that funding.
And just a quick question for Bob. Since I'm on the EDC, is this something I would need to abstain from or am I okay? Do you make a motion?
Yeah, just because you're on that body, I don't, it, it's not a private entity in which you are receiving personal benefit or gain. So, I don't see a real big problem with you.
Okay.
As long, I mean, you've disclosed your co-partnership with them, or sorry, working with them. So, as long as you disclose this to this body, I don't see a problem with you.
Any other questions from up here?
Yeah, exactly. What part are we going to pull that from? Or what part will we pull that from?
That's a good question.
That's the problem.
I guess one thing.
Great problem.
I mean, it's, it's difficult to make a decision, you know, today.
Sure.
When, when are you looking for some, some answer?
I'd say perhaps maybe at your next meeting.
Okay.
If you were able to. We're, we're trying to figure out the structure of the land bank. In order to do that, we need to know which communities aren't able to participate. That helps us establish a budget, hire staff, complete the bylaws and all of that.
Okay. I think it sounds like a great problem.
Yeah, Jeb has had great experience working all across the state of Indiana and establishing land banks. And they've been tremendous. I'm able to participate in the network of Indiana land banks that Intend, Indiana hosts. And it's just amazing to hear the progress that communities are making and revitalizing their neighborhoods.
Will there be some kind of board, some kind of governing board?
Yes, yes.
And will participating communities have a?
Yes, we will get one seat on the board should you participate.
So, I understand these are properties that aren't sold in a tax sale and that you are kind of interested in.
Yes, yes. Properties that.
Nobody is.
Nobody wants, the investment is much higher than the value could be in the end. So, the land bank can step in and acquire those properties for essentially next to nothing, clear the titles and all the liens that are placed on that property, which makes it a viable investment then for someone else to come in and buy the home.
And it would be a key wall at that point.
Generally, doesn't the county buy those when nobody else buys them at tax sale and title goes?
They don't have to take the title.
I know they don't have, but don't, they have not generally done that?
Not unless there's an end user.
So, they're just sitting out there. So, who do you actually buy it from? How is the land bank acquired?
Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, so for the most part, those unsold tax sale properties would be transferred from the county commissioners to the land bank. But they're.
See, so, so therefore the county commissioners get it?
Yes, yeah.
So, it is titled in the county's name?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, exactly. But there will be other instances where, say, the town identifies a problem property. The land bank could step in and give that owner a soft exit from the property. Or if there's, you know, consistent code enforcement violations or things like that, those properties could be privately acquired by the land bank.
But the land bank, through state statute, there are special permissions that allow the commissioners to transfer these properties to the land bank.
Right. And also a decreased redemption period time that makes it a little bit more of an expedited process.
It increases the redemption period of the taxpayer?
Yes, but after the unsold nature and the treacherous sale.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim. I just wanted to, I, I had spoken earlier in support of this. The, we've had properties that have been problematic in town already that we've dealt with and done well in dealing with them. But we also have absent owners that become problems. And I think this, if that could help with this, I, I, as I have indicated already to the council, I do support this. And whenever we make the decision, I'll be in support, so.
Okay. Where does the money come to revitalize these properties then, once, once you acquire them?
That would be the private sector. So, let's say there's a community member that would like to acquire and revitalize the home. They would have an opportunity to purchase it. Or in some cases, if we have a buyer, the number of homes, you could attract a larger developer or builder to come and inquire, you know, a dozen homes, let's say, and commit to revitalizing them all. Or in some cases, it could be building lots. And if we have enough volume, a home builder could come in. Because you have to realize that one of the major barriers to new home construction today in new subdivisions is the cost of infrastructure. And in these, our neighborhoods, the infrastructure is already there. So, that reduces the overall cost for a new home to be built.
Why would a developer, what's the benefit of a developer buying from the land bank for a piece of property that's gone through all this stuff versus them going to the tax sale? Is it because, because don't they, if it goes through a commissioner's sale, don't they get clean title anyway? What is the benefit? I mean, it also sounds great. Well, then a developer come in and do that. Why don't they do it now at a tax sale?
Yeah, so, it's kind of a gray area when it comes to like the title actually being cleaned by the county. Well, we see it sometimes, I don't know specifically how Wayne County does it, but some counties don't actually insure the title. And then title companies, not all, will take a tax sale deed and insure it. So, by having that preliminary step in between of, you know, doing like a once-through with a title agency to see whether or not the property needs quiet title or things like that, the land bank is better suited to go through that quiet title process than maybe the county would be. So, it, it's really more so, it becomes attractive to a developer because the process is more predictable. And you actually, you know, know when you're going to get it. You know you're getting a clear title.
So, you think it really increases the pool of potential developers buying from the land bank versus any other process they would do now?
Yeah, generally, I would say.
And also with the commissioner's sale, not everyone's going to know about it, right? They don't know about that development opportunity. But if the land bank is holding it, part of the land bank's responsibility will be to market that property for redevelopment on our behalf. So, we'll be attracting a larger number of developers.
Are there any other benefits of buying it through this method that would be then advantageous to the town to justify the $5,000?
I would say that by requiring the development, it becomes more impactful. You know, like say, you know, you have an investor that acquired the property through the tax sale. They're not required to do anything to it besides, you know, whatever's in your ordinance. So, the land bank would vet the buyer to make sure that they have a development plan, that they have the money to do what they say they're going to do and that they do it in a set time, typically two to three years. So, when you're thinking about property tax revenue, this could be a longer-term strategy to increase property values in areas that have relatively low property values right now.
Yeah, that's the strength I see of this, is that it would be more managed and more, more an advised effort and the town council, or the town could be more involved in that strategy and thinking for the community.
Is this going to alleviate some of the things that like Joe here has to do all the time in order to track? He's the one that tracks all these properties that are, you know, disrepair and everything. So, up until it goes to tax sale, that's still going to be completely in our wheelhouse. That's not going to change anything. And so, once it goes through the tax sale though, you still have to track all that. As we are right now.
Tax sale's a year. They have a year to come back on.
Right.
And then that, right, on tax sale, whoever purchased that or that homeowner, original homeowner, still has a year.
Right.
So, we've got two about to come off now from last year.
Right.
And then I don't know if anything's sold at this past one.
So, that's.
If, if the new person buying it doesn't do anything to develop that property though, that's going to fall right back into your lap. Whereas in this case, it would go to you guys then to.
Right.
To ensure that something went forward and then they fixed things, so.
And just to be clear, the land bank will not be managed by the EDC. We're helping to establish it, but it will be a separate not-for-profit organization.
And I assume you're going to prioritize local ownership of these properties?
That's completely up to the, the decision maker. So, once the board meets and establishes a set of policies and procedures, we've seen other land banks do that. We've seen some land banks establish or, you know, pinpoint specific properties and say like, this property will only be sold to somebody that is going to be like a home seller. Or this property will only be held for like strategic redevelopment. So, it's really up to.
And we have one vote on that board.
Do what?
We have one vote on that.
Yeah, it's long-term. Yeah, one inch, one inch.
So, I don't know if we're giving up some of our autonomy when it comes to dealing with these issues. Something to think about, the, the fact that they market the thing. I like that. Like the fact that once it goes through the sale, you guys handle it. We all, we have, you know, we meet once a month. We can't handle things that happen in between very well. So, I like it, but again, we have to.
I like the sound of it.
Right. We, we have to figure out how to wedge into it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd recommend we, we put it on next month's agenda and look at how we're going to, how we can fund it at this point. And if everybody agrees to do that, then we will do that.
Get, get looking, Sherry.
Maybe you develop more questions between now and then, just please reach out to me.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And like everybody else, you're welcome to stay and enjoy the evening or you may leave.
And he, I didn't know he was coming until 3:30.
Do you have something you want, Sherry?
I do. Whatever.
We're here.
Just put it in there. Go ahead, Alan.
All right. Thanks, council. I'm here to provide an update on the water project and talk about what the next steps will be. I have a handout with some cost estimates and figures for you before we get started. So, if you recall, on the SRF loan, we have some funds remaining. We have about $325,000 left in the loan. Jim, I apologize. I didn't bring a virtual copy to send you today. I'll try and speak up for you. We have about.
I can read.
$325,000 left in the loan. We want to spend it on something for the water, for the water department. Previously, we looked at replacing, it was like three different water lines that at the time were in big need. But two of those ended up being way more expensive than we had left in the loan. So, those were dropped out. So, we had one water line left to replace. Talking with Joe, we put our heads together and the hydrant replacements came to the top of our list in terms of just what are the urgent needs? They're going to be difficult for his team to attack. So, in front of you, we've got two scope items we'd like to spend these dollars on. One is valve and hydrant replacements and the other one is the water line. The first spreadsheet you're looking at, I believe, is the valve and hydrant replacements. And that's a total of six hydrants in one valve throughout town. Now, I simplified that. When I say six hydrants, each hydrant comes with its own auxiliary valve, surface restoration, removing the existing hydrant and its whole, you know, mini project basically per intersection. We've got, yeah, we've got seven of those in there to take care of, like I said, hydrants and valves. And the total cost we have estimated is about $220,000. And that's shown, if you open up the cost estimates, we've got a nice visual that shows you where those seven areas are throughout town. Keep going, Michael. There you go. I'm back. I should say, look to the picture, right? Yeah, there we go. So, just to walk you through what you're looking at, on, on the right-hand side, there's some circles and squares and symbols. Those represent, are we putting a hydrant in with a pumper nozzle in H3? Are we putting in a hydrant with just two ear that a fire truck won't be able to hook up to and pump? That's an H2. Are we putting in a valve or are we putting in a fancy valve called a permacial? So, as you can see, looking at the, the map of town, they're, they're scattered all throughout. Are there any questions on what that scope means? I'd be happy to talk. I'd be happy to talk about H2s, 3s, types of valves and perma-seals, but I don't think we wanna get in on that today. Why are we replacing these hydrants? They don't work. So all these hydrants are in various states of disrepair. Either there's a valve broken, it's closed, or the last time we opened it, you know, hell froze over, or whatever the case is. We don't use these fire hydrants, and we want to.
I would recommend, yes, they do need to be, yes, very much so.
They need some TLC. It's funny, it's almost like a repeat story, that the bourbon and brass manufacturer of fire hydrants, almost every SRF job I do with the community, when they have money left over, it's like, let's get the bourbon hydrants. So, and the last time I did it was in bourbon, so it was really, really ironic. But that's the first piece of scope. Valve and hydrant replacements, about $220,000. The next piece is a water line replacement. And I apologize, I don't have a whole lot of detail to show on that, but it's just a study at this point. And that just shows you where that water line is. And that is at the intersection of Pearl and Front Street. It's about 300 feet of six-inch pipe to be replaced there. And the total cost, we're looking at that, is about $100,000.
That'd just be the one line?
Yep. So we tried to right-size the scope of this to match about what's left in it. So I'm here for you tonight to provide an update on what we'd like to spend this money on, but also to get your permission to submit a PER amendment to SRF. We have to submit an amendment for the valve and hydrant addition, because in their mind, this isn't part of the project yet. So we need to give them a PER amendment to say, hey, we wanna make it part of the project. And then that would formally incorporate it, and we can move forward with the design and bidding the project out.
Joe, you were in all these discussions?
Yes, we were all working together.
Gary was there, he saw him.
Kim was there also.
He didn't like to see a fire hydrant without a service on it.
No, I don't want that.
But those small lines, I notice they're wearing up the steamers on all of them. Are those small lines?
If they're on small lines, they're not getting steamers. So less than a six, it's just getting two-eers. If it's on a six or bigger, it's getting steamer.
I don't want it wrapped around.
Right. And there's a couple that we're revising. Where's like, now it's on a four-inch pipe, but it's got a steamer? That's not gonna happen. And then...
It's more dependent on location. We can still flow water, we just don't pull vacuum. We don't use hard suction.
Gotcha.
So if it's orange lined, if it's a location we need to flow more water, we're better off with the steamer on anyway.
Okay.
Because we're not, we're not gonna draft up, it's just gonna fix the water. You fix up more water for the five-inch hose.
So you're not pumping, you're just...
We're gonna draft the wall, we're not gonna draft.
Okay, gotcha. When we get into design, we sit down and talk about each location and make sure we're not gonna short, short...
Yeah, we don't, we need, some places we need more water than the others.
Right. Might be able to fix that.
So we'll look at that.
So what we need is a motion to amend the PER to include these items. That's all right.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to include this. To amend the PER.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to amend the PER to SRF to include what was presented here today, the fire hydrants. The line's on there already, right?
Yes, so just adding this to it.
Just adding the fire hydrants on there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you. I do wanna provide an update on something else, the town wells in that situation. Have you updated council on that?
I am aware.
Okay. I just wanted to let you know that we're on that and we're looking at it. I don't have a good answer yet for what it is. I don't really like that, so I at least wanted to let you know we're digging into it. So high level, what happened? The electrician did all the improvements that the expert I went to, that the expert he went to recommended, and the motor still failed. So everyone is very confused. And the words that I'm hearing from the representative of the representative manufacturer, ground ones in the system. I don't like hearing that. They are, they are saying that they're suspected that could be the utility power coming in from the mains. And it could also be a setting that was on one of the, in the BFD. So I'm waiting to hear back from them. If I don't hear back from them by Thursday, I'm gonna call them every day, because this is important to us. And get them out here onsite to look at this, set time, and see what did they miss? Or maybe now that it failed, is there something else that presents itself that they couldn't have seen before?
Do we want to hear all that equipment for electrical spikes or brownouts or anything like that? I mean, you know, like a twenty farm...
Different levels on different things we do. We don't monitor the main incoming power from the utility. And that's, that's where the fingers are, they're not getting pointed yet. People are just theorizing, and that's where they're at.
Yeah. Makes, yeah, makes you eliminate...
I don't wanna just point at that, because that's what we haven't looked at, but that's just what's being talked about.
So we're still running well?
Yes, one is running. We can run well two, but we have to turn it on so it doesn't have that variable, turn on and shut off. So when we turn it on, it hammers on, and when it shuts off, it, it just shuts off. It's got a hard start and a hard shut.
And all or nothing.
All or nothing.
So one good functional and one good backup right now. Which is unfortunate, but if you remember, that well sat, unused...
So many deckers.
You did? I don't like that it's taken so long to get this answer. I don't like that you guys spent money on something and it broke the next day. So I just wanted to give you an update on where I was trying to run it down for you.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Alan. Okay. Moving on to unfinished business. Progress forward on ongoing lighted homes?
Still needing information. I need to know who to send this stuff to. We've got some deceased folks. I don't know where to send that to. I've got nothing back on Parkway House. So I don't know. Six-Eleven, South Fifth Street, both of those are deceased. And from my understanding, it was, it was, it has gone to tax sale for this one. That one and the house on Parkway. And I know some answers to Joe, but I've been having problems trying to find the value. And that's what happens when the state's not open, you don't know the family members, you don't know what happens when someone dies with that. It goes to a tax sale, you can put a publication in the newspaper, but it's always better if you get hold of a lot of ZB's of some sort. Just notify them, but otherwise, it's a tough situation. Yes, I feel like my hands are tied, and I don't wanna point a finger, but I, I've not done a full thing for this. I'm glad you're here. So there's a lot of stuff to doing this, and I'm not gonna put the town at risk over myself and be positioned to be sued over a lighted home. I wanna make sure I'm doing it right and have the right answers to push forward on this.
Well, we need to do it right.
Right, I mean, it's someone's home, you know, well, it's somebody, and if I don't know, I don't know. So...
They said we could actually get an extension from the EDC if we apply and if we still have to have answers come in.
Do you know when that extension is...
We, we're supposed to have all the bids accepted by the end of this year. But I don't know about the extension. They just offered that as Sarah Mitchell as an alternative, if it would have to be approved.
So we have a meeting with the Wayne County Commissioners next week where we're going to, Sarah's gonna reach out and get formal progress updates. And that way, we know for each community who hasn't completed their projects, we know what kind of timeline to ask them for an extension. But the funds are earmarked and we have them, so I don't think it's gonna be a big deal. We just need to know from you how long of an extension we need to ask for.
Sounds good.
Any more extension?
All right, thanks, Joe. And what about the update on the masonry work for the town buildings? Is that you, Jim, or Joe?
Same, the city was done. He did leave some stuff that needs to be sealed over on the big door down there. That's water plant, but that's just like a seal. He said thirty days, and we can apply that on there. Other than that, he said that, as far as I'm concerned, he was done with what we haven't done so far, thus far, anyway. Unless Jim has talked to him?
No, I agree, I reviewed it with Sam. Gary and I looked at it as well. And Joe, you and I talked about it, and I believe that part of, that project of the three that he bid is complete.
That's great.
It is a lot better, did a very good job.
Did a nice job.
So we need it too.
If we had any funds available this year to do even just a partial amount of work around the front door of the city building downtown, we could have him break out a smaller bid potentially, if we had, you know, even a thousand dollars or something like that. We really need to do some mortar work around that front door and then over on the east side.
Yes, it does.
I don't know if we have any money needed for a while.
Yeah, it's coming through inside. We can take a look at it.
Let's, we'll take a look at it first, see if we can... Do you think it'd be, you think a thousand or two thousand or something like that? Or I think just that it's actually not a lot of space, it's not a lot of mortar. There's some prep work, but it's far smaller than the entire building that we need to look at. But, but it's really the most damaged part. It's down low by the sidewalk where we get, you know, snow, salts and so forth around the front door.
Right, yeah.
Really, I think we should do this.
Yeah, it's highly visible to everyone.
Yes, damaging the building.
Long we get him here and have him close to that, then see...
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, we need to get it done, because we're running out of time, as far as weather goes.
And it's, you look at the inside wall, it needs to be done.
Yeah, you need the mortar before it really gets done freezing out. I'll give him a call and see if he's available the next, well, I would say we have probably three or four weeks open before we have a freeze. Maybe not though.
We have a meeting in ten days or so. Right, so we need to execute something by then, I think.
We can get a quote.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point, Mike. We'll see. I'll ask.
All right, thank you. All right, and on to the animal problem we used Church Street. Really, unfortunately, no progress on that right now. Bob, do you know?
I've talked with people at Animal Care, said that our people here have really tried to help them out for the feral animals that are in our neighborhood. But the entire county is facing this pet problem, or not pet problem, animal problem. And there's really not good answers if you don't have people available to take them or have your own, you know, shelter to take them to.
So there's nothing I can do? There's nothing you can do for the cats?
I mean, from, from the town's standing point, at this point, no.
So what personally can I do? I'm not paying to get them done, but can I, what can I do, relocate them?
If you wanna try to catch them and take them to someplace else, I don't see anybody being hurt. I don't know what that violates. I suppose one was somebody's pet, they tried to prove that, you would have some risk with that. But as far as other things that you could do, I really don't want, I can advise you as an attorney as far as what you should or should not do legally. But as far as the town is concerned, I don't think the town would have any restrictions on what you would do. I mean, other than if you were, if we saw you out killing the cats out in your front yard, probably the police would come in and...
So what if you didn't see it?
Get us back out of that one.
I do think we can continue to look and see, I don't know if other communities have had the issue, and we can try to, you know, use them as an example, and, you know, it's just something, like Bob said, you know, it's, 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 it's all over, and it's not really just Wayne County anymore, but...
If we could reach out and find out if there's been any communities that have had similar things that have been successful in dealing with it, and what they did. You know, if we could find someplace that was successful in dealing with this in some way, we can emulate that, but...
One of the solutions that, that we've been trying is the trap neuter release program, trying to decrease the population from growing, right? It's not gonna take care of the existing cats, but it will keep them from reproducing. So there's been efforts with Wayne County Government, Animal Care Alliance, and some other partners that have come together to pool some funding to find areas in the county where there are huge cat colonies to come in and do the trap neuter and release program. So...
Costs involved?
Yeah, it costs a couple thousand dollars per program, but there's been ways in which they've been raising funds to do this.
There have been grants available for that, Animal Care supplied for some of that. And you might even try to get them to come over and do that. Again, it doesn't take care of the cats that are alive now, but it does help hopefully prevent future additional cats.
Exactly.
So is someone still feeding them?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, can we stop somebody from feeding them?
The house that's abandoned east of him is empty, so he moved more bowls over there. Actually, he took them off of his porch and put them over there.
That's 140 Church Street, East Church there that is being foreclosed on, that we load flies, because no one's taking care of it. And he did move those bowls over there. She is absolutely correct on that.
And we can't stop him from feeding them? There's nothing we can do.
What laws are...
I don't know, the people living around him might come up with fear.
I don't know if there's any way we can pass an ordinance against feeding.
That would have a lot of blowback.
Yeah, exactly. You're in a hard place. Lots of things could be done, but you can't do it.
I mean, I suppose a private citizen could go through a civil action saying that that neighbor has created a nuisance. It's gonna be a battle proving that, but that, and the town is not involved in that. But that would be a civil action by you against someone if they could prove that they were directly responsible for causing nuisance to your property, but I would not bet on the outcome.
And you guys have talked to him and he doesn't?
Oh, he don't even look at us. He drives down the street, and he won't even look towards our way. I'll wait.
Yeah, sure.
But he ain't looking.
Extremely, I'll be there.
Every day, just like a lot.
We're blocking.
It is, I understand, understand the frustration. We're around town all the time and over there, and there, it's just, it's, it's crazy, the amount of cats that are over there.
I used to run through there, you kept looking. Tripping over a lot of cats.
I mean, they won't even get off.
They don't, when you drive through, I mean, the other day...
I completely understand their frustration over there, I really do. That's not a good answer for you, but understand it, so...
We can look into this trap and neuter program, maybe. Do they notch the cat's ear once that's done so that you can tell that it's been done? Because there's a cat up near my house that has an ear that's notched, a perfect square notch. I said, that's probably a tom, and he was a tomcat, and he's been neutered. So, I mean...
For females, they tattoo them on their belly.
Has the Help Shelter been contacted? I know you said Animal Care Alliance, just, I wonder if the Help Shelter has any program like this.
I think Richard said they were full.
They're awful.
I didn't know if there was, if they would have access to some...
So even if you're having someone to catch them, you have no place to take them.
Then you, then you do get another problem, you know, dumping and...
Yeah, you can't dump, you can't just take them out and dump them.
If there are severely sick or injured cats, there's Whiskers Rescue in Richmond, Amy Smith, she really, she just focuses on cats, but typically they have a medical issue, she's trying to save them. But just for a healthy cat, I don't know anywhere that's accepted.
There are a lot of sick ones.
They're not healthy cats. They don't even look healthy when you look at them.
It's a...
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure they, most of them, and they all live at some point.
What about the Health Department? Is there children out there?
Well, my grandchildren are there, yeah.
And if they're not healthy?
There was a lot more children.
Maybe the Health Department might be able to...
More focus on it.
The walkers across the street, right front where they're all around, they have a grandson that lives with them, it's in the fifth grade, I think. He's there all the time. Yeah, he came last time, Jim Walker. He was there all the time. Yeah, he came last time. Jim Walker.
We should look into that. Well, catch and neuter, you know, these programs, I mean, that's probably the first thing we can do. At least look into it and see what, what it costs, we want to. Catch, neuter and release and spay and release. It, it will take a while for that then to have any real effect, but it will have an effect.
Oh, absolutely, it will.
Yeah. Within six months to a year, you.
Well, be three months, probably. They have a lot of.
They generally don't live very long lives in their house, sick like that. Feral cat out there probably didn't live more than three or four years, so.
I'd be willing to talk to Animal Care or Help and just ask what they would suggest. Or what programs or what, if there are grants or, you know, I would be willing to talk to them and find out.
Okay, yeah. If we need to go to Help.
If there's anything that they can assist with or advise.
Yeah, I can go with you if you need to go somewhere to see someone or anything.
I'd be a Help Soldier, I would probably walk out with a cat.
Make room for one to go in.
All right, well, let's, let's start there anyway. I mean, it's something. No, no good answer for my answer.
Let's talk into that, see if we can get an answer before next month's meeting.
Yeah, I'll contact.
I'll be back here as well. Okay, thanks, Teresa.
All right, on to updating South Walnut Street property appraisal.
We are a step further. The appraisal has come back. It was appraised $7,500. So at least that is under what has been the assessed value. I guess it was assessed $17,000 for tax purposes, although you don't pay taxes, it's still assessed $17,000. So with this appraisal in hand, you want to now publish and decide that you do want to dispose of it. We would put notice in the paper, the offering price has to equally appraise prices, at least that would be your initial offering price. You would submit that to the adjoining landlord. The, the appraiser did point out that one thing that devalues this isn't his landlocked. So it, it's most likely going to be go to the joint property owner. So we would submit on public notice, send a copy to the adjoining property owner. And then they can, we would give them a time to submit their bid, which can be over, equal, or lower than your quote offering price. And if the only person that comes in is landlord, you can then negotiate with them at, at the time that that bid is submitted and reach, how the notice agreed is if they can submit that, you can accept it, you can reject all bids, it's whatever you want. But at least that gives them the time, plus anybody else that might want to buy it, that they can get an easement somehow. But then you can then negotiate with that joint property owner depending on what you're, so you're going to be setting out your offering price. They can give what they're bidding, and then you can hopefully reach something in between that's happy to both of you. Do you want to proceed that way? Are you ready to then give notice to the public and to the joint property owner for that offering price?
I think we are, yes.
Charlie's here. Are you the adjoining property owner?
One of them.
One of them?
Who is? Who is?
Charlie Ringwald.
But the other, is that the only adjoining property owner is that one?
No, he's the only one here.
No, I'm, sorry, I meant on the, on the, on the plat map or whatever, is there, is there another adjoining property owner?
The survey didn't say, there were more than one, it just says that there were. It was landlocked and there are adjoining property owners. Do you know if there's others?
Well, there'd be Millers.
Millers, I thought so.
Yeah, to the east.
Yeah.
And Fletcher Callahan owns some land that's adjacent to it on the north. And I'm not sure of any others.
So all of those they would get, and I, I just got this, I'll send a copy to all of council that has a photo of it and some of the.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Other titles associated with the appraisal. But we have sent notice to all the joint landlords, and all of them would be available to make an offer on it. So you want to send that for next month's meeting?
Yeah.
Because it has to be published twice a week apart, the last one ten days ahead. So we couldn't do it on the 23rd meeting, but we could do it for your November meeting. And I would suggest then that you would have a vote today, a motion made to dispose of it with the offering price of $7,500.
I'll entertain that motion from somebody.
I'll make a motion that we dispose of the South Walnut Street property for the amount of $7,500.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to dispose of said property as.
Yeah, you're not selling for that, but you're offering it for sale at that seventy-five percent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. You move on to that. Uh, next up is quotes on the fire station door. We talked about this, I think, last month.
I gave you guys the copies, the kitchen's glass. Now, there's two, there's two.
It's just the double doors, so we'll.
Just the double doors.
He quoted, he, we can't record both. We don't want to replace that door. It's open for a couple of years.
So the bottom, forty-six fifty.
What?
Forty-six fifty.
There's, there's a possibility we can get this moved into the project, the money that's left for beautification of the venue. If we want to have a motion to approve this pending those funds, we could do that, and I can go forward and fit that in, try to fit that into the budget. And if I can't, we'll have to come back and revisit it.
So what's the two prices?
This one, don't pay attention to, it's a different door, just the bottom.
That's, that door there is on the other side behind the fire trucks. We never use that door.
Oh, okay.
On the other side of the tower.
On the other side of the tower, yeah.
And this is the double doors.
So this is like a score front door?
Yes, two, two glass doors. It's like the front door station, but it's double.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept this bid pending procuring funds from the beautification project.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the thirty-seven fifty for the doors from the fire station pending.
Forty-six fifty.
Forty-six fifty. It's the second.
Oh, I'm sorry, forty-six fifty. Pending the acceptance or using refunds through the foundation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'll see what I can do there. Thanks for getting that, Joe.
Thank you.
That needs to be.
Yeah. Yeah, I get it, you shut.
Uh, next up, show revisit zoning fees. Is that you, Joe?
That's true. You wanted to have me agenda?
Yes.
Did you forget?
Not good.
I'm assuming you want to change the fees.
You want that to be on the November system?
Yeah, we'll, we'll move that to November. No, we, uh, we've had a few calls for us, the zoning, and wanting to do change the zoning for, from a single-family dwelling to a multi-family dwelling. Size-wise, lot size for that, so just let me, I'll look into that a little bit further.
Do you want to table this for now?
Yes, I want to table it for now. A lot of stuff come up in the last week.
Okay, we'll, we'll get on next one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe the next one tips.
We'll see.
And what about survey of the cemetery for a new section?
Uh, Bills and Associates were here. He has pictures of the cemetery and is doing background stuff on that, trying to figure out. What we're, talked to him about the flood zone area and how high that it comes up back there. And that back section, empty section behind Area sixteen, uh, that's where I would like to get that marked out for the new sections. Uh, but I have not heard anything back from him on that.
Area sixteen.
Or Section sixteen.
Section sixteen.
The big flat area back by the woods.
Yeah.
But now where it drops off, back where the brush pile is and stuff, that is part of that flood zone area.
That's just back behind that, that last pealipso on the north.
Yes, yes, cleaned out the corner, uh, back there by, um, my shirley's area, cleaned that out and opened that up finally. So we could get a good look at it. But, but yeah, I have not heard back from him. Now, that was last week he was here.
So that's on us. We're running out of room.
Yes, we're running out of room.
Really low on what they can sell.
Twenty-nine, twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Yeah, we're, we're getting, we're getting full over there, so if you get it.
Yeah.
Survey and plot it.
No, no real reaction needed.
No, I'm just, I'm waiting on them to come back with their, their study.
We'll put it back on November.
Very good. Move on to new business. Uh, Sherry, I think this is you, right? Insurance rebate check.
This is our first time that we've ever gotten, gotten, received an insurance rebate check. We've been healthy all year, all of us. So, um, I would like to, um, usually if we just have a fifty dollar where we would go and just credit each employee's insurance premium. But it looks like I can put the rest of the money in general and give each employee two hundred and twenty-five dollars if you want to do that.
Is that anybody that pays for that?
That's you two.
I started moving up over there.
There's seven of us that would, yeah, we'd get two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Instead of putting that on, instead of putting that on the credit.
So basically, we've received this credit from the insurance company and.
Because our kind.
So we want to just distribute it back out to employees.
I'll make a motion, we do that.
Have a motion, a second, to redistribute the refund check from the insurance company. What's the amount on there, Mike?
Two twenty-five seventy-nine.
Two twenty-five seventy-nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And then I'll just put the rest in the general file. Okay?
Yep.
Nice. Thanks.
All right, the last thing on new business is one thirty-one West Main Street, uh, which. Oh, I'm sorry, I already marked it out. We have a five hundred dollar donation.
In that town.
We have a five hundred dollar donation to the Fire Department from the Cambridge City Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we need a motion to accept.
That was for their, um.
Party, the fire station.
I'll make a motion. I can't make a motion, we accept a five hundred dollar donation from the Chamber.
They're indicating they'd like to do that yearly now.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to accept the five hundred dollar donation from the Chamber of Commerce for the Fire Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's some comments.
Whatever.
Now.
Now we go on to one thirty-one West Main Street.
I did talk to Doug last week. He did close his business before I shut it down for their, their construction, wherever they've got, you're abreast on that too. He did close it. The alley has been closed off, and the front, where the front alley is, did close that off Friday, barricaded that off Friday. He said he had someone coming in or was supposed to, two structural engineers to come in and lift that building, but had not seen them yet. I did see someone taking pictures Friday up front, so, but I have not talked to him since last week.
So I did ask Joe to close off the sidewalk last week because I was concerned seeing the crack.
It was bad.
It does fall under General Ministry rules. All those, all commercial buildings have to be maintained as least as good as they were built. They have, it's not a, I mean, we can't, we like to, it has to. Right, right now, it's definitely unsafe. That alley, we can't decide that alley. Well, well, that alley's going to be there. I mean, it could give at any time. It's got a good bulge.
I was going to say, it's bulging out.
It's bulging and separate.
If he doesn't get an engineer there, can the state get someone in there to look at that?
No, they, they force him to do it or tear it down. It's, we like this stuff to stay in town. Town's got the same authority, State House, to get things done. And here we have our own building department, and we have General Ministry rules that we can enforce just like the state can.
I'm just concerned, even though the building's closed down, if that building gives away, it's a real danger.
It is a danger.
And I saw people this Saturday walking over the tape and sitting on the bench. People are not paying attention to that tape there, and it was the antique there, there were a lot of people there, but I mean, it's, it's a town danger.
It is a danger.
It's a liability to the town.
I'm definitely not qualified to say that it's, it's stable and, uh.
Definitely not.
That's what we, that's why we, the state, we always require to get an architecture engineer to look at it.
I just want to know, is it safe?
Yeah, I don't know how many layers of bricks are in there.
Yeah.
We've, I've talked about it. I don't know which way those four trusses go for Joyce or Ruth. I don't know.
No.
So.
As far as somebody looking down, could be enough force to make a giveaway.
An expert needs to come in.
Yeah, we have, we have to have an expert look at it and say, is this built, is it repairable or does it need to come out?
Yeah. You can't, you, this, you can see the separation on the road line, they had down at the bottom, you can see the separation. The canopies pulling away from the building, and, and the bricks are pulling away from the building.
Right.
On that, on the, on the front, that's one of the problems.
On the other building, right next to it, one twenty-five, that's a danger too.
Yeah, if that comes out. People outside of that building are in danger.
So Bob, what kind of liability does the town have in this case?
Well, it's like you're making reasonable efforts to try to correct and fix it. I'm just thinking, I know if you don't, if you let's say problems for your houses, you need to condition it, so.
Right, well, that, we've got the Ministry rule on our side. It's, it's a, it's a state rule. And we have the authorities, we have a building department, we have the authority to enforce it.
My, my concern is that it, it doesn't get looked at expeditiously, you know, that, uh, it sits for a couple of months.
Well, I told the guy it hadn't been done Monday after carnalize. That's how Boris went since then. I went and talked to him as the fire chief, uh, basically as the fire chief, and told him, you know, we can stay there. He had all this stuff set for like a weekend. We closed the alley off and let him operate the weekend, and he was supposed to close Monday. We're having, having, uh, as expert men to look at it, and that were over a month out, and nothing could get.
Well, you make an unsafe building determination. If we have enough information to take that.
I mean, visible, visibly, it's easy to determine it's unsafe, you know, until somebody comes in and says it's not, that's next word.
And we can write a letter, just like we do on a house.
Exactly. And get their copy, or I need your copy, so you know.
Yeah, I think we need to get that letter. We need to get them.
I think so too.
The question's going to be, okay, what's the remedy? Do we know enough to know what the remedy is right now? Whether it's, I suppose, fix that, tear it down.
The first remedy would be to get an engineer.
Get an engineer.
That will be.
So that's why we're, that would be my wire remedy.
He's gone, come, right?
That's what he said, yeah. If you put it in writing, then he has to.
Give him a deadline for that.
Right, we can give him a deadline, right. I have heard enough of them, not a verbal deadline, but a legal deadline.
Initially, when the contractor that they have came in, Morgan, out of Central, he came here and we went down there and looked at it. And he said, I feel it will be at the soonest in November for the contractor to get in there to start fixing. Nothing's, nothing's happened.
Well, we can get that started because just like some of those people that come in on a house and says, well, I cut this contractor off, and I need X more time. If, if it's legitimate, we can do that, but at least let's get the process started.
Yes.
And then after you're, after we get that process started, it's going to clear some potential liability.
Did you have someone, Joe? Yeah, so Doug and I have been emailing over the weekend on this, going through some options, and he said to me last night that he was planning to meet today with a structural engineer. Uh, so I'll know more about his assessment, so I'm not sure, that's the only positive exchange that he's been able to have with somebody to give him information, and I don't know if that happened or not today.
We still need to get that letter.
How?
He did, he didn't.
Yeah, we, well, this documentation is.
Joe, you haven't talked to him today, right?
No, I didn't know, and I talked to him. I know it was last week, I had this phone message, after I messaged him about he needed to shut it down or I was going to do paperwork to shut it down, because it is unsafe.
So Jim, he thought they'd be in today? He said he was talking to them. I don't know if that meant he was talking to him there or in his office.
So that's all I know. I can send him another quick email to find out if he did meet with him. But I would think we need to put something in writing.
Also, I'll send you something tomorrow, you can give Joe the actual code to use.
Sure.
Yeah, I think we have to get something in writing to support it.
We'll add that to Joe and Bob's agenda for the meeting. Because I've got, I'm behind on getting this up to Joe.
Okay.
Very good.
Got a few more if I'm allowed.
Well, we're snapping, you'll be up first, so you drive right along.
Moving on.
Go ahead.
I've got two quotes from Dara, Ryan Dara.
They've all had copies of this.
From the trees that were cut down at cemetery. You have two big staples out front, it looks a whole lot better, I think. They opened it up and cleaned it up, now we're on to the fence, which I've not heard anything about fence yet. But I knew already, I think you all knew, this is going to be a process to get that fence fixed and back, that part. So the two, the big stumps outside of the fence, that is with Ryan taking them out and us cleaning it up, is that first one, the eighteen-hundred. The two outside and then the four inside, we'll clean up also. And he'll come, he'll come in and grind them and we'll clean them up. Same thing he did over here in the park. And he's got a cost and that one was twelve-hundred. And we have that money through the, our cemetery fund, right? That's where it was, I remember, who we talked about that, where it was coming from? For us.
Yeah.
We have the funds available to spend that three thousand, yeah? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
It was cemetery, it was cemetery.
Okay.
Because cemetery association's done the fence and getting through the trees.
Yeah, they're already praying for the trees.
Yes, and the fence hasn't been done yet, so we did
Cemetery after the, to grind those stumps. And not really clean that, grind it up again, get those stumps out there.
Need a motion for that. I'll make a motion, we accept estimates twelve and thirteen from Dara's lawn care to grind up the stumps at the cemetery.
A second.
Have a motion of second to approve the estimates from Dara's lawn care to remove the stumps outside the cemetery. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. What else?
Dublin has expressed a lot of interest in interlocal purchase of the rollers that we have. The old, the other one that we're going to put in, advertise, in the paper to get rid of. They have expressed a lot of interest in that. For them to use up there. If you would be willing to do that. Roughly for that, I don't know if it runs, I don't know what the extent of it is, so
Does anybody know that?
No, so Basically scrap price is where we're at and that's anywhere from from what I've done, research I've done on this thing. And it's only my age, anyway. So between running five and eight-hundred is what I'm seeing. I know scrap price is three-hundred to eight-hundred. Is where we're at. I think, I feel is what we're going to, the area we're going to be in. They are at four-hundred if you guys are willing to do that with an interlocal agreement, sell with Dublin.
Now, that was part of our ad to sell it, that if we don't get any other bids on it, or?
No, and you don't, as far as interlocal things like that, you don't have to bid at all, I mean, you can
So if somebody does come in to bid, we can just say
Sorry.
It's already
Yeah.
Okay.
So they're at four-hundred if you guys want to do that, and then you can be, at least have that going. Or we can wait and put it to bid and see what we get.
When are the bids open for?
It'll, they'll be at the November meeting because we haven't put it in.
That's to be twice, right?
Yeah.
So it'll be at the November meeting.
Well, so you haven't actually put the notice out yet.
No, no, we just removed it, I mean, you know. So we just have that portion taken off of the ad and then, okay.
So we can just sell it for four-hundred?
Yes.
I'm good with it.
Good deal.
And that's up to you, that's one less thing to think about.
Yes, I want to remove some of the issues.
It hasn't moved since I've been here.
I just want to know what they get for it when they They get seven-hundred and fifty.
And if there's been a miswarranty, Dublin's council will be contacted.
I don't want
So the recommendation is to take it off the bid and then wait for a agreement from Dublin to purchase it.
Yeah.
I'm giving that, that a motion to?
We need a motion for that.
Yeah, I mean, to remove it from, because you had earlier approved it to be part of the property being sold to the public. You're now moving to remove that so it'll be subject to an interlocal agreement with Dublin, which will be approved at your November meeting.
I'll make that bid.
We have a motion of second to remove that roller from here.
Add.
The ad for sale and inter
Interlocal.
To an interlocal agreement with Dublin to purchase that instead. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
One more thing. We have, actually, this is for Bob, actually. We have some people living in the town right over here. What are, what are my priam, priam?
This is a different
It's the same, there's not a lot of, I'm looking at the unsafe building portion, but I don't know.
We did something before on them.
There's, there's a temporary housing ordinance, I think.
Yeah, and I thought we wrote them and I thought it had been resolved, so we have to write them again. So it's not the unsafe building, that is not, it's our housing code. Okay, I've not found that then.
Let me look and see what we did with them.
Okay.
I think it falls under temporary housing.
Well, but they're living there permanently, is that right?
Yeah, they're permanently living
They were at one time.
But Joe, what you found is said like a campground or something like that.
Yeah, campground, you can't live in a
In a town, unless it's
In a statue, but I have been in the mine, you can't live in a camper in town. I mean, you can camp, I have done kids are camping out, you know, overnight, but this has been
Two years.
Yeah, I think our housing code sets out the parameters, what you have to have in a hole if somebody is
Right.
That's a new structure, that's been less constructed.
Yeah, that's what we did. That's not, there's no water, electric, no, you know, nothing.
There's no foundation. It's got your questions.
And then, you also can't live in an accessory building for some important Right, so there, it's wrong all the way around. I mean, I understand people call them times, but
So what you're looking for is how you should proceed.
Yeah, how can I proceed?
Yeah, somebody was there for two weeks.
I'm sure we've written it down. Do you have the names of the way we're doing it?
Yes.
Two years.
Yes.
Yeah, try to take your house.
With all those
Joe, do you have one more thing?
No, I'm good, I'm ready to go home now.
Well, you got Sid waiting on your
You got Wade.
Okay.
All right, moving on, Jeff, what do you have?
Little better news. Halloween, we might have a parade at town, at the thirty-first. Five-thirty, a contest at the fire station, Halloween contest. I guess you have trick or treat, six to eight.
I thought we approved that. I think you did, I'll leave you out.
I wasn't sure, I was asked last month.
You were, that's right.
Well, you had on Halloween.
So parades at five-thirty and trick or treat, trick or treat is six to eight. And contests, yeah.
We'll have a contest, we'll try to have another six.
Okay.
We have, we're at five-thirty, trying to just, you know, say we got trick or treats.
There's actually three trunk or treats this year.
I know, well, I knew one, I knew two.
Christian churches doing one, the Legion's doing one, and that, you guys are doing one.
We got a safety
Safety, okay.
And if the weather's nice, they're jumping out.
Nice, and it's all six to eight, right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Seth, you're filling in for Richard tonight?
Nothing, just special thanks to the American Legion for the donations.
You guys are so generous.
Start our
It's all about the community.
Block safety program.
Very good.
We appreciate it.
Bob, what do you have for us?
Nothing other than the six tasks that we're going to be doing to come down to you next meeting.
The one in ten days.
Mike, do you have anything?
I think I had enough.
Debbie? Sherry?
Not it.
No?
This is a Sherry question, I mean, not Sherry, Debbie. The stone gate at the cemetery, has there been any movement on getting that reconstructed or anything? I drive my bike by there and I just
Not really.
Just didn't know if there's been anything happening with it or not.
Still waiting on an answer, but
Yeah.
Jim King?
Nope. And thank you, Jim, for setting up the conferencing tonight. I think it, I hope it worked well there and it's very helpful.
I did it for you and me because I'm not going to be here jaywalking.
And you know there's a limit on how many times you can
Two or three?
Yeah, I forget two. Number seven.
We have to start first with the slide over.
All right, we're just asking, but I just wanted to thank the United States Chair, Deputy Chair Association, they their grant donated five weapon lights so we can put new ones on our, all of our rifles for patrol officers.
Weapon lights?
Yeah. From a grant that I submitted to them, they gave us five. For the same ones that donated the thermal camera to us and also gave us three rifle players back, almost three years.
Since it was a donation or was it a grant, was it village?
I applied and asked and they gave us
Good.
All right, there's nothing else.
Who said that, Mike?
Thanks, Jim. Okay, thank you.
Hey, Eric, I'll write your receipt tomorrow and I'll just
Here's your permit, we started mine. Whoever saved it for me.
That's perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.